Okay, then, please rise. And trustee Clark, would you please read us the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCosta.
Present.
Trustee Carroll. Clerk Reyes. Here, Supervisor Wilt.
Here. So we have a quorum. And first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 19th board meeting. What is your pleasure? Are there any?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 19th, 2024.
I have a motion by trustee DeCosta. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Highlandbach. And I just would like to make a note on page five. Under C, they now sought an approval for waiver of fees, I think is missing in there, for the upcoming event. That was on the Olmsted Society.
Right.
Yeah, because now sought an approval for the upcoming event, but they already had the approval for the event, but not the waiver of fees. And then it was withdrawn later on, so that would be the only correction I would see. Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, then we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on, communications.
There are no communications.
No communications. Very good. Next is the supervisor's report. The gift cards for the food pantry clients have been much appreciated by all. We have distributed 60 in total so far, 26 to Aldi, 34 to Riverside Foods, and we have five more on hand. I still have this board's approval to buy five more, and I would hope that you would allow me to use my judgment to purchase more if needed with ratification later. It would be within my spending authority anyway. The Riverside residents have been receiving Riverside Foods. All other locations in the township have received Aldi. As you can see, we've been averaging about 10 per week in the six weeks they've been available. The holiday stroll was very busy. Thank you to trustees DeCosta and Clark for joining me here that evening to try not to let people trample each other. Unfortunately, the bank across the street was giving out bags of popcorn, so this place looked like there had been a food fight at the end of the night. But we were encouraging people to see both the art exhibit on the first floor in the lobby, as well as the students' snow globes. And if they were coming in late for the choir, we promoted staying for the magic show. And the magician told me that he had the best-sized audiences for the two shows he'd ever had here, so that something worked. We were concerned with the exiting of the building after the music show, as there was a real logjam by the front door. I made the first principal repayment on the bridge bond at the end of November, and I was pleased that there was enough tax money collected not to put a strain on our cash flow. That's a pleasant change over the concerns of recent years. So to summarize our activity on that loan, we were approved for $500,000, drew only $450,000 total in two withdrawals. We made, we have made interest payments of $9,314.58 in December of 2023, $9,562.50 on May 30th of 2024, and just now we made an interest payment of $9,062.50 on November 27th, as well as a principal repayment of $60,000 on that same day. So the current balance is 390,000. And we're scheduled for $80,000 next year, and I think 80 the following year. It is spread out over five years, so we should be fine on that. The levy that was presented for, that is presented for approval tonight is the same as was presented at our last meeting. I was going to adjust some line items to better reflect where it was needed, but on further review, it was pretty much all where it needed to be. The mental health board was given the figures you saw in their part of the levy, and they approved that at their meeting on November 20th. I'm still working on getting some estimates for work in the building, so I have nothing to report on that. I have one pending emergency assistance application, and an inquiry about what was available in assistance today. Didn't have follow-through. The board, the mental health board and their partners were all notified of the passing of trustee Highlandbach's mother a couple of weeks ago, and I sent a memorial plant on our behalf. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And our offices, as well as the village offices, were closed both Thursday and Friday. A little addition that I didn't give the clerk in advance. When we were getting pricings for repairing the curtain in the auditorium, and one, one group told us that it was dry rot and couldn't be fixed, and of course, the local cleaners did manage to repair it for the time being, but I thought you should know that they, that that company that said it couldn't be fixed sent a quote for a new curtain that would be $17,508. So just so you know, that has to be fireproof and so forth, so that will be another project when that comes in. And the sound system enhancements that we approved at the last month's meeting were installed today, so that should be good to go. And I hope that everyone here and everyone in the community has a warm and peaceful holiday season after tonight. Okay, I'd be happy to answer any other questions if anybody has any regarding activities. All right. The assessor, I see that you're present here. Would you like to give us a report?
I'm Fran Sidewitz. There's the Township Assessors Report. All deadlines are passed, so we've been through the Cook County Assessors Appeals, Board Review Appeals, and Property Tax Appeals Board Appeals. So everything is kind of quiet for now. We are working on our year-end, our year-end reports and getting ready for the new year. We're working with the Cook County Assessors Office. They're transitioning to a new data format, so we'll be getting data from them in a different way, so we'll be working through that probably from now until probably through January. So hopefully, that will be a smooth transition. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Thank you very much for all your support all year. It's been a busy year.
Yes, it has. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
No? Thank you. All right. Trustees' reports. Trustee DeCosta?
Sure, yes, thank you. Just want to thank Supervisor Wilt and our board for opening our building for that holiday stroll. What a turnout. It was very, very well attended, and yes, to echo your sentiments, a little, little hairy there for a little while, but it was very good. It was great to see everybody having a good time, and wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Clark?
Exercise class is going well. We had 243 people. Last month, the month of November, I attended the Board of Directors meeting Springfield in Springfield on Friday, so they're all gearing up for the year in January and the legislative priorities. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Highlandbach?
The mental health board has no meeting this month. I have no report.
Thank you very much. And you do have the report from the November meeting in your packets.
Right.
Thank you. Moving along to our unfinished business, and we deferred discussion of a community partnership application for Riverside Brookfield High School, and I see that we have their representative here this evening. If you would please step to the podium, identify yourself for the record, and then give us a brief review of what it is that you're looking for.
Yeah, sure, definitely. So I'm Mitch Zillinger. I'm one of the social workers at RB, as well as one of the sponsors of Best Buddies there. There's three social workers at RB, myself, Chrissy Tapper, and Janara Marquez, along with three psychologists, so I'm actually here on behalf of all six of us. So essentially, what we're looking for, asking for are three iPads with covers to protect them for the students, right? And then also the stylists that go along with them. And the use that we're looking for, those are to help out our students that are in crisis. So what that means, what that looks like, is all of our students that can't be in class for whatever reason that may be, on the emotional side or social side of things, that they need to help process with someone. And the reason why we're looking for this is because unfortunately, the need for mental health services has gone up. I'd love to be put out of a job. Unfortunately, it's going the other way, though, and we can't be available the whole entire day for our students, right? We have IEP meetings that we go to and other things that we attend. And so if a student comes down that's in crisis, then they're being subjected to someone who potentially may not be fully trained to help them, right? But we'll do their best. Or what we'd like to do is offer them an iPad. Five years ago, we were here, asked for a couple, I think it was five years ago, asked for a couple iPads, had two iPads that we've been using that are great since then. Our staff has grown, so that's why we're looking for some more. But what we do is we offer them the iPad, and within these iPads, they can use different apps that are designed to help them with their emotional regulation. So one of the apps is called the Calm app. The other app is called Headspace, and then a lot of the students like to draw by numbers. So we can offer them a quiet space, the iPad, and then once we are available, we can meet with them after we're done meeting with the student that we're with or the meeting that we're in. So that's essentially what we are looking for.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I do. Do you have to purchase these apps?
We do, yeah. So the money that we were asking for covers the cost of the iPad, the cases to protect them, and then also the stylist, and then the apps are also included in there. So the apps are done either on a monthly subscription or a yearly plan. The plan is to get the yearly plan and share between all three of the iPads.
And then these Apple pens will be able to work right on the iPads? Is that it?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, they charge through the iPad and/or in the wall, and then you can use them right on there, the stylist. Most of the students use those for, or what we've seen for is something colored by numbers. It is what it sounds like. It's literally pictures, and then when you zoom in, it'll be, for example, a picture of this room, and then when you zoom into the wall, it'll be different numbers, and then you got to touch the color and put it on there. And it's used as a distraction technique for someone who could be having a panic attack or their mind is racing too fast, and then their ability to just focus on the task that's at hand is what they like using it for.
Are you having a lot of instances at the high school with these crises?
It depends on how you define crisis. But in the way that we define it, whereas just a student that comes down outside of a normal time that we may call them down or where they need something, I would say that it's on the rise, but, which again is unfortunate, but are you looking for like solid numbers?
Oh, I, I.
Just in general, there's, there is a decent amount. Some days, we may have zero, other days, we may have six or seven. It really just depends on the day and what's going on in their lives. It's a lot of overflow from classes, but also what goes on outside of school with their friends or their families, different things like that.
And you have the two iPads, and they, they're working fine now? Or are you replacing?
Yeah, we, yes, we've had the two iPads now, pre-COVID, when I was here last. They work great. Myself and one of the other social workers use them, but since then, our force of social workers and psychs has grown, and we now have six of us, which we had four back then, which is, which is great to help out with those things, but we'd like to have those available inside of their offices as well.
Okay. And one last question. RB does not provide you with any assistance or a budget?
Tough question. Yes, yes, they do, but a lot of that goes to other mental health things, programs that we have, materials that we give out to the students, speakers that we bring in, or professionals that talk about different things. So yes and no, I guess?
I get you. Okay. I have no further questions.
Any others?
I do, please.
Yes.
Is there internet access on those iPads?
There is, yes.
So they don't, so the students, if they have to use it, don't necessarily have to use your apps?
Uh.
Are they able, so my question is, are they able to surf the internet other than the apps that you're asking us to also purchase for them?
They are within the confines of what the school has on their restrictions. So they wouldn't be allowed to do any social media. They wouldn't allow to be able to like message from it or email. It's literally just what we, what we have loaded on them. They're locked out, so.
Locked out in what way for, for, so is there censorship on them?
Yes. Yeah.
What sites would they be able to access?
They would be able to access any of their school sites that they may use, so Google Classrooms, different sites along those lines, but they would not be able to access anything outside of that.
News, Yahoo News or anything like that they wouldn't be able to access?
Um.
If they're having a pan, my question is, if they're having a panic attack and they're reading something horrific in the news, is that going to continue to trigger them instead of using the app that's supposed to calm them?
Correct. Yeah, it probably would continue to trigger them. I don't believe that those programs would be locked. However, we could put locks on those particular websites, but to be honest with you, almost all the students that we see down there, they go right to colored by numbers or some type of program within the calming app, which contains meditation, things, breathing techniques, different programs that they can do on those. So students are pretty good in the moment when they're panicking, sticking to what works best for them.
Are they allowed to have access to their personal cellular phone during that time?
Um, it would depend on the social worker's office specifically that they're in, but usually not, no.
Okay. I'm assuming they're locked up when they're not in use?
Correct, yeah. We have file cabinets that they're locked up in, yeah, and all students, so if a student is left alone with the iPad, they are, all the staff members know, so then they do have to get it when they leave. And usually, those are within a timeframe, too. Students can't just sit there all day and sit on the iPad in the room, right? There are people that are checking on them every couple of minutes to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you have six people on staff?
We do.
Okay.
Yes, down in Student Services are three social workers, up in the math hall, we have two psychologists, correct?
And you said?
Three, sorry.
So you have six people on staff?
We do.
But that you have so much activity sometimes that no one's available to, you know, deal with these students or?
It would depend. Sometimes if, like, yes, because we're not always just meeting with students, right? We're mandated to meet with certain students that have IEPs, but if like someone's in an IEP meeting, that takes a psych and a social worker, so automatically, two people are gone for an hour, hour and a half, right? And then any other meetings that are going on with teachers, parents that come in, we work a lot with the deans in regards to any issue that's going on with them that a student may be needed to see for. And then if you're looking at like a big crisis, for example, it's like a suicidal thing or self-harm, stuff like that could take up half a day to a full day, where you just can't leave the student alone until you figure out the plan, right? So most of the time, or a lot of time, we are available, but there are times where there is no one that's available, and you have a student that's crying that's got to wait. So our options then are either to put them in a room by themselves, send them back to class, or have them sit and wait with the secretary until we're available. So we found that this works.
Most, all the students have their own personal cell phones?
Correct.
And couldn't you, and a lot of these calming apps are free?
Correct.
Would they be able to use their own personal cellphone?
They, they would, but then back to your point, too, is they're not locked, and they can really do whatever they want on them, right? And they can search all their social media. And although the Calm, like Calm app, Headspace, they are free, they're limited in what you can do with them from a free standpoint. So we have some students, I specifically have some students that might come down and they want to follow a program on the app, and if you're using the free version, you only get, you know, 10 minutes worth of a try on that particular program. So they are within some restraints.
Any other questions? If not, then what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve this for Riverside Brookfield High School in the amount of $2,000 for the iPads, the iPad cases, the pens, and a card that they can make some app purchases.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach. Do I hear a second? I'll second. Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee Clark to approve the request for $2,000 purchase of the iPads, iPad cases, Apple pens, and gift store cards for app purchases. I just want to explain to you that because RB is also a taxing body, as we are, what we do is we make these purchases for you, so we would coordinate our, our accounting department and you, so that we order it like on our card and it could be delivered to you, but.
Okay.
All right? So.
I'm sorry, Supervisor. I do have one more question.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please.
No, no, we have an open motion.
Has, and have you, has your group asked anybody else to help fund the iPads? Besides us?
Outside of RB, no, we have not.
Do we realize you have another township outside of just Riverside Township that has RB students in it?
We do, yeah. We came here last time, so we figured that we would again, and, you know, and there's, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yes, we will definitely keep that in mind next time.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No problem. Then we have a motion by trustee Highlandbach and a second by trustee Clark. And with clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll to take the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be connecting on that, okay? All right, we are on to the Township levy. As I said, it is the same, it's a little more readable in this format than it was when you got it last month. And what is your pleasure? It would be, let me just state that the total levy would be broken down as, sorry, the general town fund would be $757,508.40, general assistance $57,180.20, and community mental health would be $775,325.25, for a total levy of $1,590,138.5. I will entertain a motion to approve this levy.
I'll make a move to approve the 2024 Township tax levy.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the annual town tax levy for 2024. Hearing none. Would you please call the roll, trustee, clerk Reyes?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. That will be executed. The new business, the approve, the first thing is to approve the resolutions for mental health board reappointments. Both of these people are already on the mental health board, and I ask for you to approve the following. The appointment of the mental health board of Timothy Highlandbach to a term running from January 1, 2025, and terminating on December 31, 2028. And let's take one at a time. What, I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Twenty, the resolution is 2024-4.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Timothy Highlandbach.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the appointment of Timothy Highlandbach to the mental health board from January 2025 through December 2028. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Motion is carried, and then the minutes will reflect that trustee Highlandbach has abstained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. The next is resolution number 2024-5. Resolution approving an appointment to the mental health board of Kara Kalnitz of North Riverside for a term also from January 1, 2025, terminating December 31, 2028. And again, she was appointed to finish an unexpired term. This would be for a full term.
I make a motion to approve Kara.
I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the, the reappointment of Kara Kalnitz to the mental health board from January 1, 2025 through December 2028. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Very good. And the special event request, we don't need to consider that because it's now a standard request. They have waived the, the serving of alcohol. They have decided not to do so. So that is moot. We don't have to act upon that. So the next item is the approval of warrants.
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorize and ratify payments of the bills identified on the general warrant for December 2024 in the amount of $82,929.86 as presented to the board on the 10th day of December 2024.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the general warrants for December 2024 in the amount of $82,929.86. Is there any discussion or any questions? Then clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated in the following warrants. The utility warrant for December of 2024 in the amount of $1,331.54. The payroll warrant for December of 2024 in the amount of $19,659.23. The health warrant for December of 2024 in the amount of $3,176.48. Community partnerships for December 2024 in the amount of $7,475. General assist warrants for December of 2024 in the amount of $4,229.89. The township radio players warrant for December of 2024 in the amount of $240. And the food pantry warrant for December of 2024 in the amount of $2,489.60. All of the above presented to the board this 10th day of December 2024.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the following warrants for December 2024. That is utility warrant, let's see, yes, the utility warrant in the amount of $1,331.54. Payroll warrant in the amount of $19,659.23. Health warrant in the amount of $3,176.48. Community partnership warrant in the amount of $7,475. General assistance in the amount of $4,229.89. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $240. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $2,489.60. Are there any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandbach, to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Mary. Mary.